Affairs. Um, and that wish that everyone is in the enough there's academic year and productive and beautiful. So we will now move to our approval of the minutes of April 4th, 2006.
Move it.
The minutes moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. We will now move to the policy calendar. And I will change the order a bit and take Hunter College last because the president is on her way. So our first one will be the Blue College Tuition and Fees Schedule for the Executive Item number two of the policies of resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees adopt a schedule of tuition charges and program fees for students in the Executive Business Doctorate, EBD program, leading to the Doctorate in Professional Studies, the DPS degree at Blue College, effective with the fall 2016 semester. The schedule of tuition and program fees is detailed in the resolution in front of you. Attending this meeting, Benwick Rush Hush and professors Gwendolyn Webb and Joseph Winthrop from Blue College to answer any questions on this item. Are there any questions on this item?
It'd be my pleasure to move the item.
It has been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention. The motion carries. Thank you very much. I will now move to item three on the policy calendar. It's a resolution that the Board of Trustees authorize the university to choose a virtual bookstore company to provide a virtual online substitute to the brick and mortar bookstore at some or all of the colleges to support the educational mission of the university by providing necessary textbooks and related course materials to students at the lowest possible cost in exchange for payment of commission on sales. The virtual bookstore company shall be a responsive and responsible offer, chosen on the basis of best value after public advertisement and timely submission of sealed proposals through a request for proposal, solicitation, and evaluation process conducted by the university pursuant to law and university regulations. The terms of the contract is expected to be five years with one three-year and one two-year renewal option as determined in the university's best interest. A first cohort of colleges has opted to participate in the RFP. Any and all other colleges may choose to participate at a later date. This arrangement will not involve the expenditure of any tax levying funds. Vice Chancellor and Chief Information Officer Brian Cohen is here to answer any questions, if there are any, on this item. Matt, are there any questions?
I'd like to move it. It seems non-controversial to me.
I agree. I'll be happy to second it.
Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention. The motion carries.
Trustee Bill, I know we wanted to wait for President Rapp to arrive to do the Hunter College resolution, but since she's not here, I would recommend that we should move forward.
Move forward.
I don't want to hold up the -- I know we have other committee meetings that we need to get to.
Item number one of the policy calendar. Caller is a resolution requesting that of 2016, the inauguration of the Doctor of Education in Instructural Leadership Program at the Hunter College School of Education. The Board of Trustees adopt a tuition schedule that will have tuition set at $210 above the regular master's tuition level. With master's level tuition for fall 2016 at $425 per credit, the effective tuition rate in fall 2016 at this inception of the doctoral program will be $635 per credit for resident students and $990 per credit for non-resident students. This will be the first Doctor of Education program at the university. Are there any questions about the program?
Yeah, I would just like to get a clear sense of doctoral programs in other institutions. What do they pay per credit? And our own committee at CUNY, this is affordable per credit.
Yeah. Thank you, trustee Clark. Yeah, the -- this, first of all, I just want to say we're really excited about this program was approved by the Committee on Academic Affairs. And we've been, we've been working with our campuses, the ones that have graduate and doctoral programs, to diversify our offerings. And we're very pleased that Hunter College has gone forward with this education in Doctor of Education in Instructural Leadership, the first EDD program that's going to be at CUNY. Because it is a unique degree, we can charge a differential rate. What the colleges chosen to do is to set tuition $210 above the regular master's level. We feel that even with the additional rate above what we normally charge, that it's still extremely competitive. EDD programs that we believe Hunter's going to be competing with are NYU, Steinhardt, and Columbia Teachers College. And when you look at their rates, they're almost three times what a student at Hunter will get, will have to pay, I should say. So we're very confident that we're going to be extremely competitive. We know that Hunter, their master's programs are very, are of top quality, and we're confident in the education department and the dean of education at Hunter that it's going to be real quality program. So we're very excited about it.
Matt, just a quick question. At NYU a number of years ago, and Steinhardt, they eliminated their part-time option for, I don't know if all their PhD programs in higher education, but for several of them, because they didn't feel students were finishing, they elected to shrink the size of the incoming cohort and provide them more support, similar to what we're doing at the Graduate Center. So do you have any idea if they gave, they're offering part-time, how large a cohort, what kind of support they plan to give them?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know they're planning to offer a part-time program. How many students they're planning for in the part-time, I'm not sure. But my understanding is Hunter is planning to have a part-time program as well.
No, I see that from the tuition. I meant the assessment as to whether or not that made sense, and to the extent they have full-time students, the extent to which they're planning on supporting.
Well, we could ask them to, to take a look at the part-time experience and see whether they're losing large numbers, larger number of students in the part-time program as compared to full-time. And I think that would be an interesting matter for, for this committee to ask Hunter to report to his back on into whatever period of time, three or four years.
Professor Rob, would you join us at the table?
Just to give you an update, we have moved, but it has not been finally voted upon. So your timing is correct, and there are a number of questions that have been raised.
Are we talking about the EDD?
Yes.
Okay.
Professor Conway, would you summary, give your summary and question?
Sure. I see that you're offering the new program on a part-time basis, and Matt had just mentioned that you see as a competition both NYU and Columbia. And NYU eliminated a number of their part-time doctoral programs a few years back because they felt the students weren't completing, and they elected to shrink the size of their incoming cohorts and provide. So I'm just wondering, have we, what thought we given to the part-time, full-time mix, and to what extent we're supporting the full-time students?
So I think it's, they're both, they're all very good questions, but a little bit different. So the, just to step back, and I know, I'm sorry to miss the beginning of the presentation. This, so this is the first EDD within the City University System. And as so many of us know, this is an extremely important degree for careers in both the K-12 as well as higher education. And there's been no affordable solution. So you're talking about degrees at Columbia, at NYU, and at St. John's that are considerably more expensive every year. And yet they're required degrees, and so there's always, there's going to be a population that's going to seek to, to secure an EDD. So I feel like this is, and when we started this with the leadership at the central office, it was really seen as an important continuation of CUNY's mission to provide access to this degree. So we feel very confident that we already have 16 students. We just started, and we have 16 students, and they're fine students, I mean, from private universities. I actually happen to know some of them from the field who've said, I've been waiting to go back and get this degree. So I feel very confident about the enrollment. I think you make a wonderful point about the need to continue support. I think support sometimes for graduate doctoral students in terms of a priority scale, where you worry first about your undergraduate scholarship needs. There's a hierarchy. You have to make sure that we're providing it mostly where I think the tension comes between work, if you're not going to be able to leave a job full-time, to study, and how do you balance? And so that is, one, our first priority was to get the program approved and to be able to get this first class started, and then to talk about how to support student needs. One of the reasons we did ask for this marginal increase above the norm, the typical doctoral tuition in CUNY, and a little bit more than our nursing and our physical therapy, which also have step-ups in differential tuition, was to make sure that we were supporting students, whether it's through placements, enough significant attention for their research, the video labs, et cetera. So I think it's, it is a work in progress to make sure that we will be supporting the students. And then I would add, so finally, the point, part-time, full-time. We looked at this from our experience with the Doctor of Nursing practice. We started that program as a full-time program, and frankly, immediately saw the demand for a part-time program, because there's so many people in the field who want to move up and get a doctoral degree, but are not able to just give up a career, whether it's financially or just they're on a track where you just can't leave. So we found once we, that we actually made a mistake when we started the DMP without a part-time option. And that's why we started it this way. So I, I am not sure that we've ever found Columbia's experience instructive for our students and who we're reaching and what we're trying to do. And we feel really confident in our first round of enrollment as a new program, very low advertising, filled up with high-quality students. We're feeling very optimistic about what we're going to be able to do with the program.
Are the 16, full-time or part-time?
I think, I have to check that, but I believe that there's a mix, and we're just finding out as they've applied off. Sometimes people will also come and apply and think they're going to be part-time, and they realize they could actually do more credits or the other way. So I have to, I will find out and get back to you about what the actual mix is.
Professor Martel?
I think it's critical that there be a part-time program.
I'm sorry, I didn't say.
I said it's critical that there be a part-time program. Virtually everyone that, you know, like superintendents, heads of curriculum at the K-12 level, almost, it's almost a requirement these days to have a doctoral degree. So what we're doing here is we're providing people a real opportunity to take a giant step forward, and as we know, Hunter has an excellent educational, education program. So I really think the part-time program is, is more socially important, if you will, than the full-time program. So I'm glad to see that we're going to be offering that part-time program.
I was gonna say, that was really, it was interesting with nursing that we, we didn't really get that right, and then it was, it became so clear that that was the correct thing.
It's even more important in the education.
Yep.
Because so many positions have it.
I find myself in the awkward position of agreeing with Terry Martel.
It's a terrible position.
So I have actually taught in education doctoral programs, and if we, if I hadn't had full-time, people full-time employed in schools and universities, I wouldn't have had a student on our body. I mean, there, in these programs, particularly in EDD, I believe, there are many people who are already fully engaged at all levels seeking this opportunity to advance their careers. So I think it's, it's essential for this kind of program, and it's, I think, an important part of CUNY's mission to be able to offer this.
President Rob, before you came, trustee Clark asked about its affordability and our mission of addressing our citizens. And I think your response indicating what is available alternatively, especially now that we do offer a part-time option, which means that in addition to it being price-sensitive, it's also hours-sensitive, if you want to say it, and really available to the practitioners opposed to those who can't afford to take the full-time offer.
And just interestingly, the figures are, with this tuition differential, which we asked, we're in your permission for today, are the 60 credit program, which is, you know, more than Fordham's, but their cred, their per credit is 1,300. NYU is also 60. Their per credit is 1,500. And Columbia's is actually longer, 90 credits, and it's 1,400 in credits. You're talking about, about more than 50% differential between those programs based right in the New York City area. And that's again, why we really feel confident we're going to be serving a market that needs this.
Thank you. Are there, I think that addresses all the questions that were moving. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention. The motion carries, and congratulations on another part-time program.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clark.
Welcome to trustee Barry.
Oh, thank you.
With no more policy items to address, I now call on Vice Chancellor Sapienza for his report.
Thank you, trustee Bill. Thank you for covering the fiscal meeting today. Good afternoon again to everyone. My report will be very brief. I just wanted to bring the committee up to date on where we are in terms of senior and community college budgets and allocations for next fiscal year. Fiscal year 17 is beginning on July 1st, as you all know. On the senior college allocations, we're finalizing the allocations. As we've reported previously, the state enacted budget did not cover all of our management needs increases, fringe benefits, energy, building rentals, and the like. And we received no additional money through tuition revenue. There was no tuition revenue increase, predictable tuition policy was not extended as part of the state enacted budget. So there was no new revenues to cover programmatic enhancements or new initiatives on our campuses. So as a result, we have communicated to our senior college presidents and the senior college financial leaders that they should expect a reallocation from their budgets of 2% for fiscal year 2017. Because you'll all recall, in the current year that we're in fiscal year 16, there was a reallocation of 3%. So this 2% will be on top of that baseline action of 3% in the current year. So we have told our colleges for a while now to expect that the 2% will be enacted as part of the 17, and planning for that.
So let me just make it very clear. You're saying that effectively we instituted a 5% deep rate.
Over two years.
Over 10 years.
Correct. Correct. We are planning to do deeper cuts in the central administration, similar as what we did in the current year, fiscal 16, so that the rate of reduction will be much greater than 2% in the central office. So we're working with the other vice chancellors and the other heads of the department to effectuate those cuts. So the senior college allocations should be issued very shortly. The community college allocation is going to have to wait a little while longer because we need the city budget to be finalized. And the mayor issued his executive budget about five weeks ago, and the mayor and the city council are now negotiating over a new budget for fiscal 17. We're very optimistic that there will be an early agreement this year, and we're hopeful that if that happens, then we'll roll out our community college allocations very soon thereafter. Community colleges are in a different position than, than the senior colleges, in that there was additional state aid this year, which we're very thankful for. And they do have enrollment increases that are part of their base aid formula that will recognize from the state budget this year. The city has also provided additional funds to the community colleges and their budget. So the community colleges in a much, much stronger fiscal position than senior colleges, which we're grateful for, and look forward to working with the community colleges on their allocations going forward. So that's all, trustee Bill. Happy to take any questions, if anyone has, has any.
Could you just tell us what, what is the possibility, probability of ultimately a, we know the compact and norm, are we looking to tuition or other revenue sources to come in because?
Yeah. No, it's a good question, and we're certainly hopeful in, of the predictable tuition policy being extended going forward. As, as I mentioned, you know, in this budget cycle, in this legislative session, it was not renewed. So it does expire on July 1st, so we are not able to raise undergrad. This year. But we're certainly hopeful, and I know CUNY has been lobbying very hard and pushing for it publicly for a, an extension of the predictable tuition policy. So we're hopeful and will continue to work as part of next year's budget cycle that is coming up in the fall, as part of our budget request to this committee and to the full trustees of including an extension of it, and work with the folks up in Albany at the legislative level and at the legislative level. And just to remind everyone, as part of the governor's executive budget, this past year the governor did include an extension of the predictable tuition policy. Was not part of the final enacted budget, but, but we're going to try again for next year.
I will just make this my final comment, but none of us ever want to see tuition going up. But we also don't, in my opinion, one that I think what we did hear about was the predictability of the tuition. And when I first started on this board, there were times when tuition would be 000 and then 15%. To me, that is a major disservice to a student, to anyone, to a family, and family planning and budgeting. And to have a sudden increase of 15% for whatever reasons, to me, it makes a lot more sense to have a predictable, even if it's a lower rate than we previously had, but to make it predictable, to me, is in the best interest of all families that are struggling. So I will just put that on the record in terms of my support of the predictable tuition policies. Are there any other questions, concerns, or comments? With no more items on the agenda for the fiscal affairs, with no more items on the agenda for the fiscal affairs committee, I move to adjourn this meeting. And we'll now move on to the subcommittee on audit. Is everyone here?
No, we have to change.
Okay, we have to change the invisible page. Okay, why don't we, we're okay now?
We're gonna make it.
We could, we could.
We have both the chair and the vice chairman.
No, I meant, we're giving some numbers.
No, this is public. This is only public.
Yeah.
So Barry is not coming to the conference today, so Valerie fortunately stepped in.
So we'll, I called to order the subcommittee on audit. First item is the approval of the minutes of February 1st, 2016.
Move it.
Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention. The motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move to the policy calendar. Item number one of the policy calendar is a resolution calling for the subcommittee on audit as part of its responsibilities to approve fiscal year 2016 audit plan and authorize the engagement letter defined by the vice chancellor for Budget and Finance. The financial terms are in accordance with the budget year contract with KPMG. We will now ask our external auditor team at KPMG for a presentation on this year's audit plan. At the conclusion of this presentation, I will ask the subcommittee to formally vote on the resolution. Good evening.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Jane Letts. I met everyone briefly last year. I had transitioned, this is the first official audit. I had transitioned under the previous partner with KPMG in the prior year. So she had served for five years, and she, I transitioned to last year, and I will be serving the, for the audit, for my first official audit of CUNY. I did come with much Gatsby experience, as well as other higher education institutions, so I'm not sure if, you know, there may be a few new faces from the prior year. But I previously, I spent 100% of my time in the government and education industry, serve Rutgers University, I've served CUNY in, for many years, as well as a few other Gatsby institutions. So that being said, I will, our presentation was sent out in advance. This is the kickoff of the 2016 audit services that we provide to CUNY. On page three of the presentation, there is a complete outline of the entire engagement team that is involved in all of the services that we provide. You'll see I'm listed. We have our engagement quality control review partner, KPMG, has a policy that all reports that are issued, our quality assurance is that it is, has a second review by, by another partner as well. So Dave Gagnon has served in that responsibility in the past. With me at, at the table is Benny Hadnack. He is our subcontractor minority firm partner with Watson Rice. And Benny has served CUNY for several years in the past as well, and he's assisted by our silly Bernardo. And then we have Maggie and Jason, who are the managers who have been involved with the CUNY audit as well. We do utilize several specialists throughout the course of the audit. Names are here, but there's some tax specialists that assist the engagement team, as well as an information technology specialist, actuaries, derivatives in the area of investments. We utilize evaluation specialists, as well as then our staff people that either subcontractor that are associated with the team. Okay? On page four, it outlines the objectives of an audit. And really, it's just what is our responsibility? It's to audit the financial statements, to express an opinion that the financial statements have been prepared by management with the oversight of the audit committee in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. Really, the standards have not changed. They are, they are standard to the practice. So, you know, that's, there isn't any, any change to that. Pages five through seven outline the responsibilities of each of the parties associated with an audit. And the parties that are involved in the audit are typically management, the audit committee, and then KPMG. The responsibilities are, you know, pretty standard. These are all, these are also repetitive. They have not changed. It's management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements, provide us all of the information, adopt accounting, sound accounting policies and so forth, and prepare all the financial statements. The audit committee really is responsible for the oversight of the financial reporting process, as well as, you know, set the proper, proper tone, you know, of the institution. KPMG's responsibilities really are to form an opinion and express our opinion that the financial statements are in accordance with all of the appropriate standards. And if we do note any communications, you know, exceptions or internal control-related deficiencies, we are required to report them to you, and we would obviously be reporting them to you throughout the course of the audit as, I'm sorry.
Ms. Letts, has KPMG, if I'm not mistaken, has audited CUNY for several years now?
That's correct.
And we've improved, we've approved, this subcommittee has approved audit standards previous, in previous years.
Correct.
Is there any difference between the audit standards that we've approved in previous years and what you're laying out here?
No, there are not.
Well, then, because we've approved these standards, I don't know how many years, but for several years, I'm really wondering, with all respect to you, do we really need to discuss this, since this is all a body of work that we're familiar with, we've been working with you on, and it's, it's worked out very well for us, I think, and I hope for you. hope for you. And so I'm wondering if we really need to discuss these standards that we've repeatedly approved already. Madam Chair, I, I would, I think we're ready to approve them again, given that there's no change in what we've previously approved in other years.
I know, just, I just wanted to have one question.
I know, I'm on a couple other university on boards and I know there have been changes in the roles and responsibilities of directors with regard to audits. I don't know if that's for private or are they different for nonprofits? Have they had the responsibilities of the audit committees changed for nonprofits?
No, they have not changed. The, the audit committee responsibilities have not changed for nonprofits from prior years. I'm not sure if you're talking about, you know, the funds that you're, if they're private public companies that follow PCLV standards, but the nonprofit is not done in accordance with PCLV standards and it's not required nor is it's, it's not anticipated to be required.
Okay.
Chair Beal and Chair Schmidt, what I would suggest is, I agree with you about standards not changing from year to year and so no reason to go over them again. The only thing I would suggest is perhaps KPMG should go over some of the new, some of the timeline, the colleges that they'll be visiting this year, and also some of the regulatory developments that are new for fiscal year 16.
Sure.
That sound, that sound good?
Okay. Before, before she goes, I'd just like to go on record as saying that I know the minority contractor that you have and I've had long relationship with him prior to my being on the board, so I just want that to be on the record that I know him well.
Okay.
Okay. We're going to just skip forward then and we'll hit the high level. Page 12 is the college visits and then we're going to jump forward from that to just the, the new government accounting standards that will be applicable for this fiscal year period only. And that should take us a few minutes.
I'll just touch on the college visits. So listed on page 12 are the colleges that we're visiting this fiscal year. We started these on May 31st last week and we'll be doing them through June 24th. And then slide 13, these lists of the teachers who visit the college visits, none of this has changed from the prior few years, so won't go into detail on those.
When you say you're visiting the college, are you visiting their foundations as well? Or is that a separate audit?
Those are separate audits. Those are engaged by the foundations directly. Don't we set the standards of what we expect from them?
Well, actually, in that instance, FASB sets the standard because it's an independently produced audit, so they follow the FASB standard.
Thank you.
And do the college visits, I don't see on page 13, when, at what point in the process is financial aid looked at and dispersed?
At the same time.
It is, okay. I just wasn't clear.
And then we visit all the remaining.
Oh, I see. It's under student continuum. Got it. Thank you.
The colleges are listed on slide 12.
I saw that.
Sorry.
Just a question you, well, I was trying to finish.
Yep. Okay, so I'm just going to move forward, a couple of new things from, on slide 16. Just wanted to highlight the fact that this year is the first year that the college will be going under the audit for the, the new OMB Uniform Guidance. This was under the old federal OMB circular A133 audit, but now, under the Uniform Guidance, there's been some changes to the audit requirements that we'll be performing for the first time this year. So they're all listed here, but I just wanted to highlight that as a new change from, from the prior year and our report will be reflective of those changes under the Uniform Guidance. Moving forward just on, on to slide 18. As a required indication during each audit period, we are required to report to you that we have no matters to report that would bear upon our independence to serve as your independent auditor and we are not performing any other non-audit services or have any relationships that would be brought to bear upon our independence. Okay? Then moving on to slide 19 for the new GAAP statements that will be effective for the university's fiscal year 2016 financial statements. The largest, the, the largest impact will be from GASB statement number 72 for fair value measurements. This is the, the accounting standard that is similar to the one that FASB had brought about a couple of years back for the fair value measurements and the leveling in the level one, two, and three of fair value investments and other financial instruments and the disclosures and the footnotes for the reporting entity. So this year, the university will be adopting GASB statement 72 and the disclosures that you will see in their financial statements will be similar to that now of a FASB entity as they report their investments by level within the fair value hierarchy as defined by the statement.
And the foundations are also subject to this requirement? Yes, and they have been subject to this requirement for a longer period of time. This is the first time we'll be disclosing it within the GASB statements. It won't affect our balance sheet income statement per se, but it's more about the footnote disclosure. Thank you.
Okay. GASB statements 73, 76, 77, 78, and 79 are going to be adopted by the university this year, are not expected to have any impact. I can go over them in any detail if anyone wants to, but at this point in time, there's, there's expected to be no impact. They're related to either pension, new pension disclosures, which the university had already adopted, the provisions under 67, 68, so there's really no impact on that. And then other just of hierarchy of GAAP clarifications from, from, from the GASB as well, too. Okay? And then in future years, and we've talked about this before, but I'll just want to, just one, one highlight to mention is that, starting next year, the, the OPEB plans will be required to adopt the similar provisions as the pension standards were adopted under 67 and 68. And then the university in fiscal year 2018 will adopt GASB statement number 75, which will incorporate the same recognition of the OPEB liabilities into the financial statements of the university on a go-forward basis.
So Madam Chair, I move that we approve the audit plan presentation of KPMG, since we've now had an explanation of what's new in it and we've previously approved what's old in it many times.
I'd like to second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention, the motion carries. And then, if you have one question, you know, that I probably asked you, Matt, do we have a policy on derivatives?
Well, Mary, do you want?
We do have a policy on derivatives. After all of our reporting, we need to value those derivatives. But generally speaking, that would, the derivatives, we don't typically do anything for an investment piece directly. They're through our investment advisors and the pieces. And on the financing side, all of that would come through DASME. We have, we used to carry one that was on the building for McCollie Honors College, but since that more pieces fell into place and we paid that off, we haven't carried any of that.
So I'm pretty sure that the university said I was concerned about the, whether any of the foundations have any derivatives and do, do they have policies with regard to that?
We'll have to check. I don't believe so, but, but it's a good question that we'll go back and, and take a look at to see if there's any, if there's any impact on the foundations.
I would, I would assume that, given the range of investments, some of the investment management, things that would qualify as derivatives, but.
That would be my assumption, but to my knowledge, there's no debt outstanding that had, they would have put on a derivative on the other side of the balance sheet, the liability side.
In their own name.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. It would only, my knowledge is it would only be within the investments.
And we do have a couple of swaps on, but those are old and, right, but they're still on.
So I would just ask that.
The swaps are, are all done by DASME.
Yeah, right.
The ones that we have.
We don't, the university doesn't have any.
We don't, we don't, not in the footnotes? I thought I saw one.
No, those, those are from the DASME pieces?
They are your swaps.
They, they are ours, but DASME matches them and, and does all of the decision make, we don't make the decision to do them.
So I would just recommend that for the next committee and I'll speak to chairman that you just have a review of your derivatives, where you stand, in particular at the university level, but also at the foundations.
Great.
I believe that can be, are audit convinced. It's been moved in second. I, there's no more agenda items. I move to adjourn this meeting.
Goodbye.
We got time to change everything around and.